We like sharing the wealth. Watch.
Yeah, I just got home. It's like I gotta go. Yes, have fun.
Which I think with his knowledge, she was a better. She's care about phoosis and that. You know, the things what right to.
I know what. Yes.
Then go through your house or the.
Whole lot of nothing. Whole lot of nothing and. What a waste may you see.
Yeah.
I've been sitting in it all day.
Yes. It's better?
Yeah. If not, that's my story.
Should be here Monday.
That's awesome.
So I I probably. I had a double check special.
That that was awesome.
Oh, yeah.
Cause she knows.
I was very, very happy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we will go ahead and get started with the pledgeable agents.
I. And to Republic. On my mission. Invisible liberty and justice for.
Yes. Two of you be a bit much.
Alrighty, agenda adjustments. I have two additions under new business. MMA Executive Committee and the Oxford County Commissioners Budget. Letter. And I also have to add an executive session for personal at the very end.
You tell that.
You can. It's gotta happen, but. Alright, any other adjustments? Alright, so moving on approval of the minutes from July twenty fourth.
I have a small change.
You do.
Sorry. The River Road and the vulnerability study are two different things and I was worried the way it was written. Sounded like we approved of the road. His note. I didn't write down.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me hear and type the minutes obviously there still. What do you need changed on that?
Super minor. Six B.
Yeah.
Says River Road discussions, including CB peril motion to engage CB for a vulnerability study. And it passed. But the heading is River Roads, which is cross aggravated.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly. Otherwise, a second.
I make the motion to. Accept with adjustments.
I have a motion and a second to be approval of minutes with the correction. All those in favor? All business, River Road.
We got a bid back from the design engineer for seventy thousand dollars. The construction administration administration services would be by the hour. And under separate cover. According to the CB stuff, we're eligible for seventy five thousand dollars. Potentially, we have to apply for the grant. It's due eight twenty nine and it's gonna cost us an estimated seven hundred and twenty dollars to have the. Uh, what's our name?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, help us. So I guess. My two cents. Is I suggest we go ahead and spend the seven hundred, seven hundred and twenty dollars, excuse me. Uh, to try to get the design done. Because if we're gonna fix it. We need a design to apply for the money to.
Yeah.
Fix it and construct it. If we don't get the grant, then we might have to have different conversation.
Yep.
Second that.
Who said design engineer?
Derek.
Made the motion. If you're pristine.
Yeah. So where do we want that coming out of? Road Fund, Road Reserve?
Either Road Reserve or the Road Maintenance Reserve. Either one.
So I'll get that kicked off tomorrow then if everybody agrees.
I have a motion in a second. I have a motion in a second to uh, go ahead with the um, seven hundred and twenty dollars to um. Try to get the grant. All those in favor? Opposed?
Do we have a purchase order we could send them? At least they don't have a contract, so I'd like to do something that.
Yeah, limits them.
Yep, yeah.
When she purchase order?
Yeah.
CCO meeting tomorrow.
Absolutely, yeah.
So that we need shut.
Great. Alright, um, next you'll find you have the draft of the water district lease. In your packet. There were one thing that I caught. There was one thing I caught when I read it. It was just a misword. Find it. It referenced the water district twice and one of them should have been the water district, one of them should have been the town. I should have found where it was. And it might have been in the first draft, too.
That approach. Sure.
You found that?
Highlighted, I will give that if I wanted to.
Yeah, no, that's not the one. No, no, it was in one of the small paragraph. And like I say, it may have been fixed, this is. Anybody see anything that they thought needed to be changed?
I did not.
Or questions?
Not I.
If there's no other questions or changes that we can do, um, I will. Go ahead and ask for the final copy of this and we can enter the date into the front and the names in the back and we can go ahead and sign this. Um, if I can get a motion to move forward.
Most to proceed with. Working on him, one just the police.
Well, perfect.
Brutal, yes. Second.
Wow, it's gonna be what we can approve it. We can sign it at our next meeting as well as. Planning. Alright, so I have a motion and a second to go ahead to finalize this and approve the lease. Any questions? All those in favor?
I'm saying.
You have any comments? Our questions or?
I did have one. Come back for.
Yeah.
Yes.
I did uh. One question.
Yep.
I just found a typo.
Something that committed to memory.
Yeah.
Alright, so we will. I will reach out and ask for the final copy, but we can get that. Sign at our next meeting and get that approved to you guys. New business, Tom, Western Main Energy Storage.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you, uh, and I appreciate being high on your agenda. So that's good. Um, yeah, I'm Tom Brennan, I am joined here with Tom Settiello and Lauren Walsh. Uh, Lauren's the Environmental Manager with uh. Uh, Chinbro. We're all representing Western Main Energy Storage. Um, this is a product of the project that's early and it's. Permitting process, we submitted uh, the preliminary permit to the uh, FERC, the Federal E- Energy Regulatory Commission. A weaker circle. And uh, so it's important that um, we communicate with the towns that will be near this project. It's actually gonna be um, in Dixfield. But it's right near the Canton line uh, west of London Lane.
Both reservoirs are in Dixfield.
Yeah. And um, but still, I mean, we're. Will be in the region and it's important to communicate and give you the 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 face and name and phone number of the. Of a person to, you know. Ask questions of or refer to uh. Uh, other people, but. Lauren is the person who is really leading the permitting process. Um, I'm working on um. Public Affairs and Tom and I have. Worked on various things going back to the eighties and um, you know, we've. We're still at her. And so basically, the uh, concept here is that there are two reservoirs. One's higher in elevation than the other. And uh. As we have renewables coming online and many are online, um, when the sun's out and. The the and and the wind's blowing, the the price cost of electricity tends to be fairly relatively cheap.
For who?
When electric field, you keep your mortgage bill is a problem.
Yeah, well, that's that's not my fault. I got the same problem.
Yeah.
But the uh, you know, when when that is the case, the idea is to pump water up. And then when uh, the sun's not shining and the wind's not blowing or there are uh, winter storms and the. The the grid is interrupted, the um. Power supply is strained. Um, you release the water from the upper reservoir to turbines to the lower reservoir and generate how. To fill the gap. Right, when when we have a spike when the sun's out. Um, and then when the sun's not out, we can fill that gap by you, this project should, it's basically a water batter. And um, so that's that's the process. It's, there's nothing fast about this, the FERC process is three to five years. Um, there's gonna be lots of opportunity to interact with um, folks in the region. And uh, but we're here tonight just to introduce ourselves and um, and get the dialogue started. And so um, thank you for taking your time and giving us the time. To meet with you and uh. You have, I'll think you all got a card, so you got my phone number. Um, you can always uh, reach out and and uh, ask questions or. Ask to see us again. Um, do either of you have any debt?
Um, no, that's pretty much, that's where we're at right now. The permit that we submitted is a preliminary permit application, it's essentially a notification to FERC. That we are going to fully study the proposed project area. Uh, and refine our studies from there on environmental impacts. Um, resource impacts, community effects, power impacts, so.
Well, one last.
Over the next three to five years.
One last element to um, just touch on is, you know, we'll. Access the river for the initial fill, but after that, it's gonna be self sustaining. Um, you know, just be a closed, closed loop. Uh, system, the two reservoirs, so.
So has it, I mean. I understand that, you know, filling it from the river, but. We are in droughts, what's gonna happen when you're not getting that natural precipitation to maintain the levels?
That's a great question, and so um, we we are. Initial analysis of the um, hydrology of the area suggests that. We're we're probably not gonna have to augment. Uh, very often, but to your point, there will be uh, you know, extended drought. And so we'll, we will be looking to um, you know, add supplemental wells. Uh, in in the area and we've initiated initiated the geologic analysis. Um, of, you know, faults in the area and, and you know, the features that would guide um, of productive well installation.
So how far is it gonna be from Howbrook? And affecting that water level?
I don't think that it, there's a map on the website that is made there and Howbrook, so there is pleasure in London. That are in proximity. To be, the what we're planning as the facilities right now.
I have some hayfields right in that area, a little concerned about depleting the ground level.
Yeah, so one of the studies that we will be doing is to make sure we maintain that downslope watershed. Um, you know, the Asian skews are gonna. More or less require that as well, so.
So concerned I'm the only one to ask the questions, I got another one.
So how are these reservoirs gonna be constructed, are they? Water tight or are they just holes in the ground where seepage can occur? And if you put wells in to supplement those. How is it gonna affect the aquifer that supplies water? Every other.
Those are all items that will be part of this three to five year study period. And on the tail end of that three to five year study period, we'll have a final design. We we most definitely want to seal these because we do not want to lose our water. So they will be designed to be sealed from impacting aquifers. And, you know, also for safety reasons, so there's actually three permits that are needed through FERC. So the first one is the one that we've just applied for. The second is basically the the permits you construct, so we will give them our design and they will. Allow us to construct it or those such as changes.
Where is this gonna be?
Uh, off London Lane.
Uh, you know, with the.
So.
How many aquifers are, do we have in this town, it's just one main aquifer?
The only one we're concerned about it person there. I mean, this is a three to five year permitting process. It's gonna be a lot of talks involved and that's no different than the C P foul. Transmission line is gonna be a lot of compensation.
London Lane, that's behind me, right?
No, no.
Over, over on Canton though.
Just before the trailer park on the other side of the road.
Where the trans uh, mission line is, I mean.
Sensation is to the towers.
Yes, right near the one part.
Just as Sean said, this is a three divided project and during that time. All of us or a part of us will get communicating with the council. You're going with the administrative mill, we had four hydros. Took four years for us to listen to us and we had involved the communities, we had environmental groups. So you'll have that conversation, I think between the three of us, we're gonna keep communicating and do those things still on.
So we lost time.
So they aerated in the winter to prevent ice and someone and also mosquito growth in the summer?
I have not seen that in the ones that I've looked at, but it's the natural fluctuation of.
Okay.
Any other questions from anybody?
Probably way too early to answer this question, but how do you plan to access the site with your construction vehicles through Canton?
So London Lane is is what is currently proposed in the in the FERC application right now.
Okay, and. Coming off of Canton Point or?
Yeah.
So through Canton then?
So that's the small portion that would be in Canton, so London Lane. And then. Basically, we're letting that chance to private.
London Lane, that's right.
Where?
I'm just thinking about during your construction, having me driving on campus.
Yes, exactly.
So in, when you go in London Lane. When you get to the first intersection where there's a bridge. That goes to the right or there's a woodyard, uh, wood road that goes straight ahead, would you be going straight ahead or would you be going right towards the wind towers?
Uh, straight ahead. So we would not be going.
Okay, so you'd be going up on, okay. Yep.
Was that song, Mildred?
Yep. One of them.
That's just, that's part, that's why we're reaching out, we wanna know about those, the local.
Yeah, that's the going to the left there is the Dix, is one of the Dixfield threads, so.
Are they still harvesting wood out there?
They have been, they were last one.
So that's gonna be a conflict.
I would imagine it's done by the same landowners, so. Yep. Any other questions?
I have one, can I keep this?
Yes, definitely. Yep. Alright, thank you guys, thanks for coming. Yeah, you need more. Have a good one, thank you.
I'm also the. You don't know.
I do.
No, it depends on the timing.
Alright, um. The. Archie's slash transfer station. I didn't add it on the agenda, I don't know if we did.
Well, I know that we were having an issue, um, Jim can attest to this, um, Archie's didn't do pickups. Um, so I have to be aware that. Um, we've been impacted by them, um, but there is just some miscommunication there. They thought we were on an on-call basis, which as far as I know, we've never been on an on-call basis.
Never been on call. An automatic pickup since we started.
Yeah, they they somehow changed that. I mean, so we're supposed to be back on an on-call basis, but. Just. A lot of lack of communication, um. So.
I have a thought moving forward, if we stay with that. Would we be possibly better off to look into purchasing the contract, the compactor, cause I honestly don't have a lot of faith. In calling them and they're gonna be right there to fix it, which is why we've done it in the past, it's on their dime. They clearly are not overly reselling things.
I think we need to put it up then.
Oh, I can tip.
And just.
Aaron has reached out to Casella who's giving us three different bids of the type of service and what they have, so.
Yeah, what we'll need to do is we'll have to put it out to bid on our Facebook page and. There's a lot to notify at least three companies, is a dollar figure of the above.
Obviously.
What we can do.
Want it on the Facebook page and then.
Yep.
Continue on it, okay.
Yep, on the Facebook page and then we can also reach out to three companies. If you already reached out to one, you can reach out to two more.
If we put it on MMA.
It can go on that classified page, I have a man.
Yep, we can take care of it.
Yep, we'll go ahead and do that and.
Every week.
Get it started. I would say if it starts. Fourteenth now.
Eighteenth to the.
If you list it all next week and, yeah, that would work and have it done at our meeting on the twenty eighth.
Yeah, can you do by the twenties?
What's that?
The bids due by the twenty?
Yeah, yeah, have them do that twenty eighth, so we can sit at our meeting, we could open the bids and go through them.
Twenty eight, uh, twenty eighth, right?
Yes, yep, twenty eighth at five.
Yep.
Open a meeting.
Yep. And we'll open that night.
Right to refuse any.
Right to refuse any and all bids, yeah.
Anywhere else you'd like to see it, just right, those two for right now, that's pretty much getting them.
Yeah, I think those, yeah, those two and then just reach out to a couple. Just Google it and find a couple and reach out. Any other? Thoughts or questions or?
No. It's a broken system right now.
Doesn't seem to be working.
No.
Did you have anything to add, Jim?
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, that's okay, because we talk very quietly. So we're gonna put the Archie's contract out to bid, is there anything else you wanted to add on that?
They've been nothing but problems. Nothing. They they wanna go every fourth. Day that I'm open for before they empty the recycling or the trash. That's hard to do. I'm pushing it hard. I'm surprised the arms haven't ripped out yet.
That's what happened last.
I've had that happen.
Yes.
And then back when Archie had it, because we didn't know how much that would hold.
Yeah.
Archie, the old Archie, they had a schedule after that, every third day I'm open. Then they had a big blowout after the new company bought it, Archie and his boys. Wafted. And uh, nobody knew the scheduling, so I understood the first situation. They did come, they did correct it, took about two and a half hours, but. Then Alexis. She got so it. She had a schedule out every third day. Now these people saying the computer doesn't recognize it. They were refusing. To do it every third day.
And bring us another contract.
I mentioned about the canister dumpster. The cans at full right now, you do probably do Saturday. But the cans full, they promised they would have it dumped last pride, uh, last Wednesday or Thursday. Nothing but lies. They. They don't care about us. I don't know why the hell they bought the company.
Yeah. Some of their equipment doesn't look like it's even. It's supposed to be on the road.
I asked them about the universal waste. Oh, we don't pick that up anymore, but to give me a name of a company in New Hampshire, they have probably have a, a branches closer. So I haven't had to call them yet. But I went now. The representative for Casella came. He told me they don't pick up either, but they have somebody that.
So they signed contract then?
Yeah.
What do we do?
We put it out to, hope we get a better response.
If those armies break off the trash. I got no choice but to close.
So Casella, come on, talk to you? Casella come on, talk to you recently?
They came in actually last Wednesday. A week ago yesterday. They took pictures of the layout, they have the same layout, the same setup.
Yeah, Erin and I went down and talked to Living Bull, she's got a nice setup down there. And she said she.
He took the pictures that he needed. He sent them to his boss that day. I guess his boss's name is Phil. And uh. That's the last side of it.
We're still waiting on what?
They they do have three yards. I understand is they have a yard down in Saco, there's one in Scarborough. Or no, not Scarborough, uh Lewiston and another yard in Waterville.
Yeah, I saw it off of uh off of Parkway in Lewiston. I've been new, tell me so.
No. After Saturday, I'm gonna have to keep the canland closed, just tell the people, put it on the metal pile.
Yeah.
But uh we'll get a good wind, that's gonna be messy.
Maybe the.
Yep.
Heads together and empty it. Right, how big is the compactor, just so when we put the cord?
I don't know.
Know how big the compactor is?
Uh, how full is it?
No, how big is it?
Oh, I have no idea.
But it's a compactor and. How many?
Thirty.
And how many recycling?
They asked, they, if I minded, if they got a bigger container.
Cans for.
The one they brought back and same stuff is.
You have four recycling.
Plastic.
Right, four recycling. Paper.
Five.
Five.
Five compartment, not five separate units.
Five compartments, yeah.
Yep.
I'm just trying to think about how.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, just so you know, it's five compartments, I say.
compartments for recycling.
Yeah.
If it's cheaper to do mixed recycling, you could do that.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, or maybe.
Single sort. I think is what they call them, single sort, I think is what they're calling them.
Okay, I'm just trying to come up with, make sure we have.
Yeah. All the info.
Yep.
Anything else on transfer station before we move forward?
I think when we get some numbers, we should have the Littlemore lady come up and talk. From, I talked to Erin about it quite a bit yesterday. She seems to have some good info.
Should we try to get her in for our next meeting either way? So we're not too delayed.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have her number?
No, I can go down and talk to her.
Yeah.
They they have three roll offs up there, down there, they don't get charged for.
Mm hmm.
I mean, it's actually set up.
So they don't have a thing, right? They do it all the way around.
Yeah.
Just not.
Uh, well, we're having a very good time, have a little discussion with her.
And they take tires all the time.
Before we brought it to somebody. Because you might want to go a different route, and Carol just mentioned you might want to get another town involved.
Park was looking, so it wouldn't hurt to.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. But didn't you, no, you didn't say Karen did, they have contractor being that's they take tires all the time, three dollars a tire.
They take a hundred and fifty tires at fine down there and then B D S comes and fixes them.
Yeah, yeah.
They really have a nice operation down there. Me, if you retire. Light bulb, everything, they're all recorded, so you have that reported at the end of the year, it's awesome, Sarah.
All right.
So we'll leave that, Sean's gonna contact her to come to the next meeting.
I've already decided that, didn't you?
I just make you sure.
He had already said he would, so.
Or or we can do it, Sean.
Oh, yeah, why don't you guys do it?
Okay, I just marked it on that one, so yeah.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you. And Robin, I'm sorry to keep bending your ear, but I get so frustrated, I gotta talk to someone.
I understand.
Folks, have a good evening.
You too. All right, uh highway department.
That's me with getting things asked for. The town garage licenses inspection station. Um, there's license, it's five.
Right.
I can't hear you, can you say that a little louder? And I'm not even deaf or wearing your nose.
We've had this, we've had this conversation before about getting the highway department license, Matt Dyke is supposed to be working on all town equipment. And inspecting town equipment. And I've talked to Andy about this. And I didn't get a response, so how are we about getting the town garage inspected? State police have to come in, get the town garage.
Right, the process to go through, yeah.
Was that part of the agreement with Matt when he came to work for Canton?
It wasn't.
No, that he not, no, it was not part of the agreement.
So probably not part of his job description either.
Well, the only thing that was mentioned was he had an inspection license and there was a possibility that we could look at doing that. Is the discussion that we had.
We're gonna do it, I think we need to look at both that and the fire station though, because one of them is gonna be better than the other.
But I would say.
Part of the tools are on one location, so.
For, but that's.
All you do is you call state police, say I wanna get my garage license as inspection section, they come in and tell you what you need, tools.
But shouldn't talk to Matt first to see if that's something and it wasn't discussed when you hired him?
Uh, he's a, my impression when we did hire him, he was okay with doing it if we get to that point.
Cause.
I'm getting a different feedback from Andy right now.
I am too.
Sounds like. Um, he doesn't want to be a mechanic and he was excited to be in town and not be stuck in the garage all the time. So I think this is a conversation we have to have, particularly if it's not part of his job description.
Conversation we had up there when you guys had and he was working on all town equipped.
We said it could be a savings if he could work on all town equipment, we didn't say anything about inspecting everything and.
And you, Brian, you said he was gonna inspect stuff.
I said he has an inspection license is what I said.
And we just got twelve hundred and fifty dollar bill that. Kid on the field that worked on fire department stuff.
Yeah.
So why isn't that working on?
He's worked on some of his, uh, we know.
I'd say I, was he asked to?
Has Nemo gone out that up there, he's supposed to work on all fire department stuff too, all town equipment?
No, because that wasn't the decision that was made.
Yes, it was, you told me personally, right out there that he was working on all town.
I said the option was there, I never said it was.
This is why we're paying him twenty six dollars an hour.
We're paying him that because he's worth it to work on the highway, but.
In that's more than you're looking in Mexico.
And we got a great employee for it.
Well, how.
And you agreed to it.
Okay, tell.
How are we gonna get the? We're having a conversation, we're respecting each other, don't go over there with your white shirt.
I'm not.
How are we, how are we gonna get the town garage license to for him to inspect?
We'll talk to the highway foreman and go from there. It's his department, you're you're one that's very, no, I'm gonna finish this before you interrupt me. You're one that sits here and tells us that the highway, the regardless of the department, the person who's in charge of that department runs their department, we don't micromanage. So if it's something we want to look into, we will ask Andy how he wants to handle that and go from there.
And this is why I've got that on. That that's a process.
So Christine is the one is our liaison to the highway department.
She's the contact.
Correct. So she will contact.
And it sounds like she's already had that discussion with him and and she was involved in it too.
No, I was separate off the clock when Andy asked me why it was on the agenda. And who put it on and I said, I don't know.
And this is my feeling that department head should be here to have this discussion.
Okay, so for moving forward purposes. I think we need to figure out if he really wants to do inspections, we have to figure out if it's his job description. And actually probably start with job description. Have a discussion that we're all part of perhaps as to whether or not we're gonna move forward with that and find out what the next steps are with respect to licensing the um. Licensing the town to get it done. And it sounds like there's even a question of whether or not we should do it at. Highway department or the fire station? Did I hear something say that?
From what had been discussed earlier, the thought was that the fire station. Was maybe a more likely source as far as being able to. Have the access and the. Headlight testing, etc.
Okay, so I'm gonna write that down, description of his job to talk with him. Depending on what's actually in his job description and then three, are we? Have Andy look into whether a fire department's better or? Highway department?
I think that you have to be the state case, I would, the John, okay.
Can I ask a question? What's this discussion had the other night at the historical society?
Nope. Was not, it was something else. A different place, time, on something else.
So are you gonna get back to us next meeting?
Sure. Would you like? Me to email you a copy of his job description once I get a copy of it?
No, I got everybody's job description already.
Can you maybe email me a copy of it then?
You can get it from her.
Thank you. Okay. I'll circle back with Andy and. Follow up and report something next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, almost strike D, moving on to E. I didn't finish what I needed to finish with my, or the, so. Striking them.
Uh, I could tell you something about that if you want. That shed was removed, that was all.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, red shed is gone.
I was on in the dark where I was gonna put that in, so.
Um, E, railings in the old school.
I asked that to be put on, the historical society, we're trying to get it. A little more. Up to accessible like it should be. And one thing is it needs railings going to the upstairs, which is looking towards, you know, we don't want something new. And someone came up with the idea, wondered if we could take out the railings, just as you go in the door and go up to the first floor, just those railings. And put in the historical society. For the safety factor, but also the historical of that part of the school.
The ones going up to the second floor might be the right length for the first step flight, so.
Well, Julie and I measured and we can. Around. Of how much we would need.
Anything that can be used from that building should be used.
You know, and. Who owns that building?
We do.
The founder? The thought.
Do with it? We're gonna do it.
Tear it down.
Hopefully.
But the thought, you know, let's start with the ones, if you first go in, that's maybe the safest flight to try first. If that would be okay with the town. I take the hardware too.
Yeah.
Makes sense, man.
Go hard.
Saves a few bucks and buying new ones, right? Well, that's, we didn't wanna buy new because of the building, the historical being so old.
Yeah.
And then someone come up with that and I was like, oh. You know, what? You can safely, like Christine said, safely get out of that building that's usable. That's why, you know, definitely wanna go up on the upstairs floor.
Not bad. Yes, no.
So.
I've been all the way up up.
All right.
Uh, F, onto the water, turn the tree.
What do we wanna do it, do we wanna do it? Halloween is coming up?
Mm hmm.
Um, do you know if Derek has the drama club yet?
Uh, last I know, it's still up in the air.
But if not.
It was up in the air, shooting me the position's still open, but. I don't know if it's been filled yet or not.
Halloween's on a Friday night this year.
It is.
So. We just wanna, you know, go for trick or trunk until we find out about the high school, well, we did it last year without high school, we have a bunch of.
Yeah.
Willing.
Do you wanna do it on Halloween? Do you wanna do it on Halloween night or the weekend before?
I said the weekend before.
Yeah.
Friday or Saturday.
Better attendance to the weekend before.
Saturday night? The twenty fifth?
I'm not a town that weekend, I think for the.
Do you wanna have the football schedule yet? Because you're gonna have to look at that, yeah, because you're gonna have to look at that sort of thing too. As far as how much help we get, because if there was a Friday night game.
So I think we can say.
What we had last year had nothing to do with the high school.
Right, but I mean, as far as parents, whatever, it might help.
So I think we have consensus that we want to look at doing it.
Yeah, so do you say the twenty fifth, Robin?
Yeah.
It's all cleanup, I don't know that that really matters, but that should be okay.
Yeah.
We could, we could throw all our.
Clean up trash on the trail.
So we'll look at the football schedule, I'm seeing.
Yeah, I think we should do that and then let me make a few comment questions at work and see.
And I'll reach out to the family that helped so much last year.
Mm hmm. Yeah, we can see if people are interested in that and then as long as we get enough volunteers to do it, then we can make it happen, but.
Cause we had some scary people last year.
Yeah, it was nice last year.
It's fun.
Mm hmm, I love to hear the people scream.
The ones who lose it fast.
All right, Brian, I'm all set on that question.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Come on, we're fine.
Movie night. Just a reminder that our movie night is tomorrow night, um. Yeah, food's starting at six, um, Jason Lee's starting to sing it from seven to eight and if it gets dark enough, we will have Moana two. Um, I just got the license for it about a half hour ago, so we're good to go there.
So do you have that planned?
Hmm, uh, don't thank me, I, the the two of them did all the planning, I basically got, I got the license, they've done the rest of it, so.
Maybe grocery list.
I gave her what was needed and then went from there, but.
We've been telling everyone that comes in to register things and come in, just remind them, we posted it on Facebook, shared it as much as we can.
We've got outdoor games for the kids to play too, to hopefully keep them.
And clean.
Yeah.
Past Moana? No, beforehand, between supper and Moana, yeah, so we'll save.
We have high hopes, we're gonna, I didn't, I don't think the screen was put up when I.
It is.
Is it?
Yeah, oh, good. Yes, we wanna make sure we thank you and Phyllis, they put it up today because they're going away for the weekend.
I was wondering who did it.
Yeah. He's gonna take it down Saturday, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was up when I came.
We're excited about it.
Appointment papers.
All right, we have, um. The, do 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 code enforcement and treasurer. And then the three appeals board members appointment papers only to be signed.
Or James will be turning hers in tomorrow.
Okay, well, she, we've already got her appointment papers.
She.
Um. Do you want this one talking or this is a whole permit from, sorry, it's a whole permit from Saturday. Sometimes they require the board signature, sometimes it's just mine, but this one is.
Yeah, we do, we got it.
Sorry, I caught on, I should stand up to, but I'm caught on the floor.
Oh, permit for Jewett Hill Road.
I love you.
You're such a. More than I.
No, we didn't.
Okay, we're not having side conversations right now.
I'm not going near Carol, I know what's.
That's that private contractor and Tony.
You always want. I also wanted to give everybody this.
Okay, guys, we're not gonna do this anymore, we're done that conversation, we're moving on.
We got a thank you note from Brenda Hammond. Um, oh, so Robyn, I'll give you that pass.
That's a cute one, it's nice.
You wrote a nice note on about.
Their wedding picture, he was a little young back then.
They were very young.
They were very young, yes.
I don't.
Probably be more hopefully open and open this stuff. Uh, you took some more than you should.
Sorry.
You went into it all. Yeah, now you're gonna say. Yeah, now you're in touch. You're not even finished here.
I know, I leave those for the end. We motioned all of these to the last meeting, so we don't have to do that now.
So if you just, if you don't wanna come watch, you could just come get supper at the snack shop tomorrow night.
Oh, I'm gonna be there. I'm gonna be telling, I think your grandson's coming up next, bro.
With a whole bunch of kids?
You get set back in the corner.
Walmart and Home Depot, so you tell me, at least I get food out of it. I told Rob, I told Rob to have a date night at the snack shop.
Then I'll be working outside on the popcorn machine.
Alright, so, next thing we have on the agenda is the Maine Municipal Cast Your Vote for the MMA twenty twenty six Executive Committee. So, it looks like we have. Executive Committee members. Cast your vote, um. Proposed by, uh, Vice President, one-year term, proposed by the nominating committee is Anthony Ward from Casco. Only have one, so. Uh, Executive Committee members for a three-year term. Have to vote for three of them, Phil Prowl from Auburn, Suzette Francis from Quebec, and Mark Leonard in VZ.
Sounds like a good look to them.
Or do we have any writing candidates? We also have the option for writing candidates. Leverly declined. Alright. But, but, down there, dude, can you just send that back to him?
I don't need to sign it.
Nope.
Unless you wanna volunteer.
Unless you want to volunteer on one of those again, but.
He can write it in.
Um, next, um, we had a letter from the Oxford County Board of Commissioners. Looking for a couple members from our district to serve on the Budget Committee for Oxford County. Members will review the twenty-six general fund budget in the fiscal year twenty-seven on organized territory budget. Um, meeting takes place on. Wednesday, the twentieth, at six P M, in the Med Care Building.
Yeah, I wanna do it. Some else wants to do it.
No, you can have it. You have to submit the name.
Well, I was just trying to figure out how a member. I would say just show up, if it doesn't say anything on there about having to turn in names or anything. It's a, this caucus for you to elect, to select a member for our district too. So I believe what it is, this is the date of the caucus, you have to go there, and if you're one of the two elected, then you will move on to do the budget process.
Yeah.
You can have paper. Um, other business. Yeah, I think.
Um, the seventy-five thousand dollars for the C B grant has come in, that is deposited. Yes, taken for yesterday, um, so. People can move forward with their proposals, their. There are different areas.
Yeah.
You're gonna have it, we'll sit down, down in the garage, since that was your guy.
I can talk to him about it.
Okay.
And what you want me to do.
Well, we gotta his quote, so it'd be. Putting the sub loader down, and then the breathing heat would have to go, and then he'd have to. Do, and find their list of finished stuff.
Yeah.
The one thing we need to find out on that is how that works with. Uh, in terms of the funding end of it. Is that, is there a match percentage that we have to match, or does the saving money cut over all of it?
I believe.
Before we go and start asking people to do the work, we need to make sure we know exactly how that works.
I believe the quotes came in under that seventy-five, if I remember correctly, so.
Right, but is there a match that we're supposed to put in from our funding? Are they only paying X percent and we're supposed to pay X percent? I just wanna make sure before we go and approve it, we know what's happening, that's all.
Is there a copy of that grant?
Oh, yeah, it's, it did like, and then you sign the. Did you read that?
The commitment letter, yeah, that all that said was basically, here's the money. That's really all the letter said.
And he means, honestly, don't know.
Yeah.
That my pig works at home.
Yeah, not really, all the, all the award letter, and well, you have a copy of the award card in there, but. All it says is this is the amount of money that you were given, it doesn't say anything about.
Can you Google it quick?
Well, it should be in your email too.
Yeah, and there's also a check that, that we have to submit reports every.
Three months.
Be reported.
Yep. So those other deposits, according to Andy, were, um. Three months probably, because he sent the listing of what we've received for deposits, he called the guy from the state.
Some of them are, some of them are.
Okay, yeah. So we gotta figure out where those are. And it's on my list.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'll actually look for it. But Google doesn't come up with it.
I've also reached out to Steve. B, C, D, B, C, uh.
CCB.
Thank you, um, to start setting up the annual training for all the employees, so. Waiting to hear about, I just emailed him this afternoon.
Hmm.
What are we doing else as a board again, like we did before?
Depends on what they say we need.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, that needs to go back.
Any other other business?
Yeah.
Fine, I can wait.
Well, it's that time of year, and the, these new clubs are working, doing a toy run.
Hmm.
And we would like permission to use the field.
No.
Okay.
Do you have a date?
September thirteenth. And we do have the liability insurance.
Yeah.
You got it on pause, so.
Where are you guys starting this time?
Farmington.
Farmington, yeah.
They wanna come drop the toys and have a cookout to feel like we did.
Hmm.
Three years ago, cause the last two years, we did so much damage, we couldn't do anything, so.
Yeah.
Is that, do you want that publicized at all, or?
Well, they're supposed to get pamphlets paid to send out, soon as I get one, I'll drop.
Okay.
Hmm.
Yep.
Okay.
It's in the works, or we're just. Trying to get all of our eyes dotted, teeth crossed, so.
Yeah.
Cause we could put it on the sign.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
On the Facebook page.
Can I get a motion?
A motion that we let the ATV club use that field, I call it Two Thakers Field.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Keith's Fields.
Yeah.
Keith's.
They wanted, they owned it after the thing.
The field.
Yeah.
I have a motion in a second, allow the ATV club to use the field for their toy run on the thirteenth, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Alright, approval of the warrants, AP warrant number one thirty-five, six sixteen fourteen. One thirty-six, fifteen hundred. Number twelve, hundred and twenty thousand, twenty dollars fifty-one cents. Number fourteen, eleven thousand five ninety-eight sixty-six. And number sixteen, fifteen thousand seven twenty-nine ninety-five. Payroll warrant number eleven, five thousand seven forty-nine oh nine. Number thirteen, six thousand two ninety-one oh five, and number fifteen, six thousand nine seventy-nine eighty.
Six thousand, yes, the motion approved is red.
I have a motion to approve is red, all those in favor? Any public comment? No? Christine?
Sure, um, we are going to start applying for a grant, we got a bid back from. The engineering firm that will cost seventy thousand to design the road. And then it'll be additional cost for construction administration, they estimated that it will cost. About three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand to construct improvements. So, we have identified a possible grant for the design services, which we're going to submit. Should we get the grant, well, that will be a big enough to cover the design services, if not, we'll have to. Look at other alternatives at that point, other alternatives for funding design, or. Um, cutting down the trees is actually on the list, and look if you got some.
Don't do that.
It would be nice.
It would be very nice. We've, we've looked at a number of possible funding sources, and at the last minute, we found one by accident.
Yeah.
That could fund the design, all of the funds for construction, you have to have the design done first, before you can apply for the grant to do the construction? Yeah. Yeah. I had met with someone. I don't know if it was last week now, or what, but. He's, uh, going to be giving us an estimate on removing the largest trees, and going from there.
Right? Right, it's down, it's not between now and winter.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Yeah. That's what we did after the thing, then.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
If not, anything will wait long, hope we don't.
Okay, you're not being helpful right now, again. Yes. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I don't get it, before you come see over there.
For me.
And I go, man, I was thinking. I would have thought it in there, so I could warn them, so I would. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Remember, David, you're using common sense.
Yeah. Problem is, we don't play the way they want to, they come back on to us. Yeah.
Now. These are your wife and her dress, that all. We like to make fun of dreams. But it's a very offensive.
Yeah. Oh, no.
When it went over. We only have plenty to left.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, move that off, and then when that went over, you can have time to get out of there.
Yeah.
Mother nature's cruel some days.
And boy, you're by yourself.
Yeah.
That's all I can say.
We thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Dave.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, many committee reports?
We had a couple of things.
Okay.
Andy says the Western Star Dock Truck was received back today.
Yeah.
He's working on more folks to bish on the River Road trees. Uh, he took one pile of stumps sorted, he's got one pile of stumps sorted at Pine Grove. He plans to move the Welcome to Canton sign early next week. And had a lot of questions about FEMA money, where it went, and whether or not some is going into the roads budget.
Anything that came out should be going.
Anything that came out has to go back in, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so all that FEMA money goes back in.
Well, there was one section that needs to be divvied out between fire and soil, and I'm not sure what that told. What that FEMA was. Amount wise, so somewhere along the line, you'd have to backtrack on paperwork and.
That's either you or Rob, cause I wasn't involved with those meetings, so.
I'm just saying that.
So it's fair enough to tell him the money's gonna go back into his budget if it came out.
Correct, if it came out, it goes back in, yeah.
Do I have to do anything to make that happen?
No.
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Mamie looks just like you, Linda.
And you're still working on Gary, ever questions?
Bernice will be here on Monday.
Okay.
To start trying to figure out where things are at and what needs to be done.
That's all I got.
Okay. Um, Rec Department Soccer is starting very soon, the first game, I think, is the weekend, is the September sixth, I think, is what the first game is for soccer. Um, Andrew has taken over, um, as our soccer director, um. So that should be good, he should be coming into the town office anytime, if he hasn't already, okay. Um, he's gonna be coming in to ask you guys to print or copy some member, uh, signup forms.
Are you gonna do signups the same way you did for baseball?
Very similar, yes, yeah. Yep, so there will be a Venmo pay option, like we did for, um, baseball, so that should be easy for parents. Um, he's already been in touch with Hot Colors to figure out the shirts for them.
And you're gonna create a spreadsheet like we did? The first one, or is it somebody?
Yeah, I can check with Andrew and see if he's gonna do it, or if he needs me to do it.
If it's helpful, then you can see who was registered, made where, and, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I can check with him.
What's that shirt they asked for?
Andrew, yeah.
Dun, dun, dun.
Dunleavy.
Dunleavy.
Yeah, Dunleavy. Um, so I had, anybody else? In the box?
In social was well attended.
And the dump burnt transfer station is very well attended.
Um, any other board questions or comments?
Nope, not on.
Uh, we have a quick executive session. Can I get a motion?
I can also adjourn in terms of executive session, I don't know what the thingies are.
Four oh five, six, personnel is E or F?
Personnel, four oh five, six A.
Six A. Two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. So, make your own motion.
I have a motion. And a second, all those in favor? Alright.